All right. If everybody wants to get seated, we'll begin with the second portion of this evening with the candidates for Carrollton City Council. We'll briefly review again the formatted rules prior to the start of this portion of the forum. The candidates did draw for the order they are seated, and that's going to be the order for the questioning. None of the candidates have seen the questions or know what is going to be asked. Kristin and I have reviewed them, and we've also reviewed the ones from the audience, and we're selecting from those for the forum this evening. We did have just a couple little housekeeping things that we'll note. You'll notice a couple of names that are handwritten, and with one candidate, they did not get the letter, and the other one just missed the notice of it in their letter. And we've discussed it, and everyone is good with everyone participating, because the point about being here tonight is to be informed for the voters, and so we have a great slate of people up here to talk, so thank you all. We will spend about 45 minutes going through the questions. You will have assigned time limits on each question. They'll be between one and two minutes, and you'll have the green light coming on, and it will show when you have 20 seconds left. The red light will come on at five seconds. Our timekeeper, Alexis Stevenson, has joined us, and we're glad to have her from the FFA. They are the co-sponsors of the event with us from the News Democrat. I'm joined again by Kristin Beck, our editor, and I'm Jeff Moore, the publisher of the News Democrat. So, let's see. For the audience, we do ask you that you refrain from clapping or making noise during the forum, and we will take time at the end to thank the candidates for their participation with a great round of applause at the end this evening. So if everyone's ready, we'll get started, and we'll start with a 60-second opening statement. And Mr. Hill, you were the lucky one to win number one, so you get to go first.
Good evening. My name is Doug Hill. This will be my third term in the city council. I have to say upfront that I have enjoyed being city councilman more than I thought I would. I truly enjoy it. I've lived in Carroll County my entire life. I'm married to my beautiful wife, Leanne. We have three sons. When I first came to city council, my number-one goal was to try to bring Carrollton back to where it was when I was a child over on Sixth Street. It's difficult. I enjoy it, and I hope to enjoy it for another two years. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Root, you have 60 seconds.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Root. I'm married to Kim. We live on Fifth Street. We have one son, Tristan, his wife, Brandy, and our beautiful granddaughter, Jayden, that lives in Lexington. I've been here since 1981. My whole platform of this election is our city, your voice. I feel a lot of you out there, nothing against our present city council, felt like you're not heard. I feel that we need to clean our city up. I want to be your voice. I want to help the council back to the way it was 30 years ago, 1981, 1970, back in the glory days. We have a beautiful city. We just need to expand on some things, change some things, enforce some codes, and bring our city back to the glory days it used to be. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Dethridge, you have 60 seconds for your opening remarks.
My name is Anne Dethridge. I've been a lifelong resident of Carrollton. And who could not? I think it's age, joke of beauty, with the ones over here to the right. I've retired from Carroll County High School after 30 years. I did some subbing off and on for 20 years at the vocational school. I have three children, four grandchildren, and in my past, I'm not going way deep because they'll cut me off, but I have served as city council member for 18 years. I was the first female mayor of Carrollton for two terms. I thoroughly have enjoyed the community and the people here. My children, in the past four years, said, "Mom, you don't act like yourself anymore."
Thank you. Your time's up, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we'll move on to Mrs. Jimenez. You'll have 60 seconds.
My name is Cara Latrell Jimenez, and I've been in the county as long as Anne has been mayor, 18 years. I have raised my children, Anna, Lydia, and David, here in the county in both public and private schools, and as well as I have worked in those areas. Currently, I work at the library. I've been there for 10 years, and I want to bring a lot of new ideas to the council. So I've seen some issues, but I really have heard about how great Carrollton is, and I want to bring it back as well, to its former glory days as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dicko, you have 60 seconds for your opening remarks.
I'm Jeff Dicko, a lifelong resident of Carrollton. I am a full-time paramedic, Carroll County EMS. Been there nine years, part-time at Carroll County for about five years. Been on Carroll County Fire Department since the day I turned 18. I've been on the city council now for, this will be my fourth year, second term. I've really enjoyed, you know, being able to get out and socialize with people, you know, hear people's opinions, you know, their ideals, thoughts, concerns. I think we've made a lot of strides just in the four short years, but obviously, there's many other topics and concerns that need to be addressed and worked on, and we are making progress. It's just a slow go, and that's some of the things that we want to do and address over the next four, next two years, sorry.
Okay, thank you. And Mrs. May, you have 60 seconds as well for your opening remarks.
My name is Sandy May. I've lived here for 49 years, so I'd say I'm pretty well established here. I've taught for 27 years in this county, retired and continued to work in the schools. And as an educator and a hard worker, I feel that I have something to add to the city council. I became familiar with this town before I ever moved here. I went to school at Western and traveled through about 42 to get home, and it was a beautiful town. So when I found out I was moving here, it was still a beautiful town. Now, the people in this town need to take pride in it, and we need to get back to where we used to be, not how we are today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll begin our first question this evening. Mr. Root, you get to start. This is going to be a question with 60-second answers, and this is what you'll address. The quotation marks, "There's nothing to do," or "There's nothing for children to do," is actually what I have written down here. It's something we hear frequently. As a member of city council, how do you think this should be addressed?
I think that we need to address this. I think this causes a lot of reoccurring problems. I'm also teaching the school system, retired and came back. There's nothing for our youth to do here. I think we do need a community center. I think we need activities for our children. You talk about bringing people back to Carrollton, you know, they won't come back unless we have things here for their kids. And we need to look at that and get activities, not only a family center, but we need activities for the kids. A movie theater, something here for our kids, because when, you know, we talk about downtown, there's nothing else to do downtown. There's nothing there. I know we're getting a nice restaurant, and I'm glad of that, but we have to have activities for our youth and our young people to come back here.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dethridge, you have 60 seconds for this.
Seems like all the years I have been on either city council or working for the city as mayor, this question has always come up. We've had committee meetings, we've had planners to come in and talk with us. It isn't the building or the structure that is a problem. It's the ongoing maintenance of the program for children or seniors, regardless of the I'm thinking, I think back in my younger days, nothing was provided for us. We did have two movie theaters here, fortunately. We got to go on Saturday afternoon. Is it it?
That's it, thank you. It goes fast, doesn't it? All right. Mrs. Jimenez, this is a 60-second answer.
I do agree. We do need some sort of a community center. However, we do provide activities down at the library for the youth if they want to take advantage of it. It is what you make of it. If you have a building sitting there and no one's attending, and that can happen very well. We need, I feel like we need more, to celebrate Carrollton more in a way. The top 25 best small cities have an arts center. They thrive on the arts, the top 25 cities in America, and one of them is Paducah. And I studied Paducah for a while, and the reason why they came back there, about a city of 25,000, of course, were much smaller, but they built their activities in the center of the city around the arts, and I think I would support anything dealing with the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dicko, you have 60 seconds.
You know, I hear this topic every day. There's not a day goes by that I don't go to Speedway, Walmart, Kroger, that we don't talk about it at some point, and I agree 100%. It is crucial to have something for the young adults, the youth, the children here. We have to be realistic. It's a town of 4,000. We also, we also need to make decisions wisely. We can't go out and spend $2 million if it's not there. So we need to formulate a plan, an idea, and trust me, every city council meeting that I've ever been to in my four years so far, we've, there's been discussions, there's been talks about what can we do? We've got to stay on track with our, with our, you know, our downtown renovations, our Point Park, you know, improvements, and, you know, we're writing the splash pad to Carrollton. It's baby steps. It's progress. It's not an overnight thing. It's not going to happen in six months. It takes time, and you've got to just stay to the goal, and that's what we want to continue working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. May, you have 60 seconds.
When I first came here, there was a teen center here, and it was very well attended. There were lots of kids that came, but over time, the attendance dwindled down to the people that were trying to keep it going finally gave up because they quit attending. There is, there are things for our kids to do, and I, the sports programs, the church groups, the library, the pool, but even the pool, when it first opened, you couldn't get in the pool hardly or get near it. And I took one of my grandchildren out there, and there was no one there. So it's something that we have to think really hard about, because it's not going to happen without a lot of thought and a lot of input from a lot of people.
Thank you. Mr. Hill, you have 60 seconds.
For four years, I've been on city council, and for four years, Mayor Adams has been talking about this water park downtown. That's how long these things take. None of this stuff happens overnight. It takes a community. We need involvement. There's lots of nights we have city council meeting when there's nobody there. People need to be involved. We need to get everybody involved. If we want a community center, I would love to have a community center, but it's not going to pop up by itself. We need community involvement. We try very hard on city council, playground equipment, the splash park. I'm very proud of all of it, and I'm proud of all the city council people and the mayor for getting it done. Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next question. Mrs. Dethridge starts with this one, and it will be another 60-second question. I'm mixing a question from the audience with one that we had. I'll start off with the audience portion first. What skill set from your work experiences will you bring to city council? And the other part we're adding is, how will you serve the city residents outside of attending meetings? And so you have 60 seconds for that question. Mrs. Dethridge, you go first.
I hope I've got the question right.
Would you like me to repeat it?
If you don't mind.
Okay. What skill set from your work experiences will you bring to the city council, and how will you serve the city residents outside of attending meetings?
As, with the experience that I've had already as far as city council member and mayor, I bring a lot of knowledge and experience. I'm going to start out with the new city building. The old building was about to fall in, but we worked together as council to get that through. Then, the biggest project I had probably was the regional sewer plant. That took almost eight years to get that complete. It's going back and forth to Frankfurt, back and forth to Washington, out of the box. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Jimenez, you have 60 seconds.
As far as what skill sets I can, or work experience I can bring to city council, is I have lived in a diverse amount of places over the years. I'm originally from Frankfurt, Kentucky, but I have lived in Europe for many years and as well as New York City and Detroit. So I've lived in big cities, and that has made me appreciate the small townness of Carrollton even more. I was here in 1979 with the Kentucky Junior Historical Society to, our objective was to put as many historic properties, and I can tell you Carrollton has a plethora of historic properties, and they are astounding, on the National Historic Register. Out of 100 homes that we submitted to the National Historic Register, 80 were accepted, and that is why you have a National Historic District to this day. I love Carrollton. I love the history of Carrollton, and I think that with those experiences, I can bring that back. As far as, may I ask just one more? Can I just answer the second one?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm breaking for a couple of moments.
Oh, well, if...
What would I do outside of attending meetings? I'm at the library. You can grab my ear, as some people do, and also, I live on Fifth Street. I'm in a pretty busy area, and you'll also come to my house and talk to me, and also my cellphone if you want to talk to me on that too as well. Thank you. I'm sorry.
All right. Mr. Dicko, you have 60 seconds.
Well, this is the easiest question of the night. I, as many of you all know, I'm a full-time paramedic on the ambulance care, have been for nine years. If you know me, if you've met me for five minutes, you know I like to talk. I can talk your ear off. I apologize. I do get to meet a lot of different people, a lot of diversity. You know, we meet people at their best, we meet people at their worst, unfortunately. You know, if you see me, if you see an ambulance, odds are probably, you know, 50/50 shot. I'm in the fire department, you know, there's not a day goes by that you won't see me cruising up and down Highland in my car, a little blue Toyota. Speedway every day. I go to Walmart, you know, I'm just typical small-town person. I really believe that being able to interact and meet people, you know, the local committee, emergency planning committee, you know, I really enjoy just being, I'm right all the time, this is small-town USA, and there's no better place than Carrollton. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. May, you have 60 seconds.
I've worked with children for years, and I've worked as a leader. I've been a team member, and I've had to work with many different agencies. I worked for the State Department, going into schools and trying to identify how they might increase test scores. The fact that I've had that experience of working with people, I think it's important that we work with, we're a small town, a small community, a small county. We need to work with all of the leaders of the county. We can't just make decisions without, and provide without having input from all represented, and that goes with the people as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hill, you have 60 seconds.
I have worked for Kentucky Utilities at the power plant on US 42 for 33 years now. I've worked with older generations. I've worked with younger generations. I've been on city council for four years now, and I enjoy being out in public. I like the questions. I like being asked when I'm out in public, if there's something on somebody's mind about what we're doing. Nobody is going to agree with everything that the city does, but I don't mind being liaison, I guess you would say, try to smooth things over, because everybody's not always going to be happy, but I do enjoy it. I enjoy it more, like I said before, than I ever thought I would. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Root, you have 60 seconds.
I've been a teacher and educator for 39 years. It's a long time. I have served on committees locally, but statewide, but nationally. I've been president of KBA several times. I know how to get things done. I know things take time. I realize this, but you have to stay after it, and stay after it to get it done. You have to put your nose to the grindstone, look straight ahead, and get it done. And we have a lot of people that have done that, but we need to stay after it to get our city by. I'll be available 24/7. I teach now. People think I'm nuts. I get to school at 5:00 AM in the morning, while I get the job done. Even though I don't be there till 7:15, you do what it takes to get the job done. You stay after it until you get it done. I get there at 5:00 o'clock. I leave today at 4:30. You know, you do what it takes to get it done. You have to stay after it. We want to improve our city, we have to have leadership that will stay after it and get the job done, no matter what it takes, 24/7. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we'll give you 90 seconds. It's another, we only have two from the audience, and this is the second of them, and it's a little bit more in-depth, that'll give you a little bit more time. It starts with Mrs. Jimenez, and here's your question. What is the plan on trying to get people to live and stay in this city and county other than housing? We need some type of entertainment to keep people staying in the area. Kind of more of a statement, but there's a good question within it, so you have 90 seconds.
You have to take pride in your community. I think we have a good community that is willing to come together. So first, you have to show pride in your community. The reason why I ran for, or I'm running for city council is because I got tired of hearing all the negativity about Carrollton, and I don't think it's that bad a place to live, or I wouldn't be here. So I think we need to stress our attributes of what Carroll County has. The downtown area, although it is not occupied yet, is still a beautiful place. It's quite classic, and I think we need to offer more opportunities for work and play here in the county. Work, we have a great deal of people on welfare, so I would suggest some sort of transportation, public transportation, that would get the county working, and that would also get them out to other areas of shopping. And that is one, one of my main advocates for running for city council. Other things we could do would stem from getting people working in the county, so people would want, more people would want to come to Carrollton. And also, if we offered a few more things, like I like festivals, and I love our festivals, and I love what the Tourism Commission is doing. So I just think we just need to just add that little extra to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dicko, you have 90 seconds on this question.
Cara, I couldn't agree with you more. You know, during the, during campaigns and political season, you hear all the negativity and the downfall, and, you know, I really believe that there's so much potential here, and Carrollton is a great place to live. It really is, you know. We compare it to other cities, you know, and we're not them, we're Carrollton. You know, we're not Louisville, we're not Florence, you know, we're not Madison. You know, we're Carrollton, Kentucky, and there's so many bright spots to this town. Yeah, there's improvements that need made. You know, what city doesn't need improvements? You know, there's always going to be issues that arise, there's always going to be, you know, concerns, there's always going to be, you know, citizens that question you. That's part of it, you know. I myself, I'm really excited about this new restaurant. I know we have, we've beat this to death tonight, you know, but it offers such a variety. You know, it's kind of like the foundation of bringing downtown back. You know, we lost that all main. It was a really good restaurant. It was a place you could go, live music on the weekends, you know, that's just where you went, whether it was Tuesday afternoon for lunch or Saturday night, you know, you don't have to go out of town, you know, and that's, that's the exciting part, you know, about that. I really think this could be the cornerstone to bringing back, you know, to starting the process of bringing back downtown Carrollton, and I'm really excited about that. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. May, you have 90 seconds on this question.
I think housing is an issue as far as the pride. When people come into the community, it's got to look good, and there has to be things there to offer them, to entice them to stay here. I think that one of the things that, I visited a town in South Carolina that was dying, and I went there specifically because I saw, I thought, that's what's happening where we are. And they overcame it because individuals within the community that cared about the community became involved in doing something about it. And I think that there are people in this community that need a little bit of help. We have elderly people, they can get out and mow their yard as often as they should or cannot afford to pay. We have people that may like to spruce up their house, but they don't have, they don't have the finances to do it. So maybe we can find some, some money in grant money and put that money to use and help people get things together, and you and I take an active part in doing something in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Hill, you have 90 seconds on this question.
Unfortunately, in the past couple of months, we, in Carroll County, have lost, lost a very good grant writer. And I was asking him about grants for painting projects, because I'm a firm believer that a coat of paint on a property can go a very long ways. You know, grants aren't like they used to be. They're very hard to come by. They're very hard to come by. There's a lot of paperwork involved. And unfortunately, for Carrollton, we don't have a grant writer at this time. I'm sure there's one that works, but we're not there. Beauty's in the eye of the beholder. And when you come off the interstate, I know that's a county problem, but it's a disgrace. It truly is a disgrace. I think it's all what you see. And I'll go back and say it again. I think a little bit of paint and a little bit of landscape can go a very long ways in the way things look. I think we're going in the right direction with the new restaurant downtown. I'll say it again, we have two now. And Splash Park's gonna be a very nice feature too, with some new playground equipment. Time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Root, you have ninety seconds.
All right, we addressed the housing issue, but I don't think we really called it what it really is. The housing problem I feel in Carrollton is we don't have affordable housing. We have young professionals that come in here making forty thousand dollars a year. They can't afford a hundred, forty, fifty thousand dollar home, or a two-hundred thousand dollar home. We need to have affordable apartments, affordable housing. We lose professionals in this community, I feel, because we can't find a place for them to live. I think the great, new restaurants be great downtown, the Splash Park. But I would like to see some kind of transportation, maybe from the park to bring people downtown. I don't mean this bad, but people go downtown and listen to entertainment, they have a few microbrews. They may not be able to drive back to the park. And they get picked up, heaven forbid, they won't come back, because they say, hey, you know, I couldn't get transportation back. Our cab company does a great job, but I believe they stop at five-thirty in the afternoon, or the early evening. I would like to see a bus maybe go around Vanity Fair, do a tour downtown of our historical homes. And really show people what we have to offer here in beautiful Carrollton. We have a lot of things to offer. We have our plants out here. One of the biggest things that people that come here and drive around, they're shocked how much industry we have here in Carrollton County. A bus service, some kind of system, take them from the park to downtown, to the new restaurant. And maybe we can make that grow by doing things like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the final person with this question is Mrs. Dethridge, and you have ninety seconds.
Thank you for putting me last on this question, because it has really been answered as to how I believe. I've lived here since I was two years old, so you can figure that out. And I've had many opportunities to move someplace else. But all of my family is gone. They're not dead, they just moved on someplace else. And they said, Anne, come live with us, come down here, come over here. I said, no, thank you. I love my river town. I don't know whether any of you kind of notice my pictures on Facebook or not, but to get up in the morning and go out and see that river and the fog, I mean, it starts my day. I love it. Now, as far as planning on how we can keep people here, we have to have a positive attitude by staying here. If you live here, let people know how happy you are, and what it is you like about it. Get their minds working. Be inquisitive. Is that it?
Oh, you have three or four seconds.
Thank you. Okay, well, I could go on forever, but anyway.
Okay, your time's up. Oh, yes. Okay, thank you so much. All right, the next question is a ninety-second question. We will begin with Mr. Dicko. And here it is. While there are folks who care for their property, the ones who don't make it appear that there is a lack of pride in their community. Code enforcement does help in some cases, but in many of them, the situation repeats itself again and again. As a member of city council, what can be done to address the way our city looks? And this is, again, is ninety seconds.
And I'm gonna kind of repeat what Mayor Adams said on this topic. You know, we have made a lot of progress. There's obviously a lot more to go. We understand that. I understand that. I see it. I see it every day. You know, my neighborhood, every neighborhood has something that needs done, but we've implemented ordinances and resolutions to begin that process. You know, I know that it really began four years ago, when myself and Mayor Adams took office as mayor. And it's a slow process. There's a lot of legality to it, there is a lot of loops that you have to go through. And homeowners are entitled to their, you know, they have to have the time as well. You know, you have to give them the proper time according to law for them to fix their property. In the event of a repeat, you know, offense, then those are addressed. I promise, every single day, we have two ordinances, two code enforcement officers, that are, that are working every single day, you know, eight, ten, twelve hours a day to get this done. It's just gonna take time. It's, I wish it could be done tomorrow. I do, but it's not going to. You've gotta take steps. You've gotta work towards the main goal, and we're gonna get there. It's just gonna take time, whether, whoever's mayor, whether whoever's on council, it just takes time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. May, you have ninety seconds on this question.
Again, I say getting the community involved in these code enforcement issues and whatever. You know, sometimes people are so overwhelmed with their lives that they don't see the things that we see. And I think that if we could give, if we cite someone, give them some information as to exactly how they can go about reaching the goal that we want to set for them. Maybe we need to let them set a goal and reach them little by little. Because I don't think, a lot of people, they don't even know what you're talking about. They don't understand the process. And a lot of people do not realize how long it takes sometimes. I also was on planning and zoning for a while. And it seems like sometimes there's a breakdown from the time that someone is cited before it's actually anything is done about it. And there's usually just this piece of paper that tells them what's wrong. And maybe we need to be more specific as to what they can do to get where they need to go.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hill, you have ninety seconds on this question.
Over the last four years, we've added a roving ordinance officer to the streets of Carrollton. Greg Ford was our first one. He did a fantastic job. We're in the process, we have a new one now. And it is a every-singled-day chore to keep the grasses down. You know, to keep the properties cleaned up. They work at this diligently all the time. And it is due process. There's paperwork involved, there's always a lawyer involved. You know, we don't just cite them, and that's the end of the story. It does not work like that. I had no idea. I had no idea that it took this long to do anything with the city of Carrollton. But it does, and that's just legal matters. That's the way things are. But we're trying. We've got more now than we ever had before. And we'll keep trying. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Root, you have ninety seconds.
I really do feel that to change some of this, we need to put pride back in our community. A lot of us here tonight have pride. We took time to be here. The person next door to me or you, who doesn't have pride in their property, maybe we need to build a relationship with them. Not only cite them, maybe we need to show them avenues they can go through to get it fixed. Maybe they don't know someone who cuts grass at a reasonable rate. You know, there's twenty-five people in my neighborhood that comes around, cuts a lot of yards or not. I do it myself. But maybe we can hook them up with someone and find them avenues to fix their problem. You know, we, the city needs to build relationships with these people with the subpar housing or grass issues. And make it not norm to be the person with the bad grass. You know, if everybody else is doing something right, and you build those relationships, they're gonna feel like, hey, I can do this also. And I need to get my property to that level. You know, in education, they tell us to model behavior that you want. Maybe we need to model what we want our town to look like, to have pride in our town, to make it. I know this is corny, sort of like Mayberry, everybody works together and knows everybody, and everything's beautiful. It's gonna take a lot of work, I realize that. It's not done overnight. But we've got to provide avenues besides just tickets for these people, to help them get their properties back up to cover.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Dethridge, you have ninety seconds on this question.
Thank you, and once again, a lot of the answers have already been given. Sandy, your statement as far as people understanding why they need to do something was good. Jeff, relationships. That's communication, and communication is what? The key to living, to everything. If you see something, if you're walking down the street and you see a neat little chair, you think, what's that chair doing on the front porch, you're out in the yard, but you like it, it has character to it, and the person's out there saying, oh, boy, I like your chair. How do you use it? So friendliness is gonna be one thing. We cannot sit, as all of you know, in one place and hope that things are gonna be taken care of, because they won't. Just like teaching school. We can't leave the classroom thinking that all the students are gonna study all by themselves. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mrs. Jimenez, you have ninety seconds on this question. All right. Okay, sorry about that. I moved on looking for the next one. While there are folks who take care of their property, the ones who don't make it appear that there is a lack of pride in the community. Code enforcement does help in some cases, but in many others, it repeats itself over and over again. As a member of city council, what can be done to address the way our city looks?
Okay. For those who, properties, when you're talking about looking at properties, I would say ownership. People take pride in what they own. If you are renting, and I've been a renter, I don't care. I want the owner to take care of my problems, okay? But if you own your property, you are proud of that home, or that apartment, building, whatever. If you own it, then you will take care of it. I agree with some of the people here. Some people are, especially Jeff Root's neighbor, whom I'm very good friends with, they're elderly. Maybe their property does need TLC, but they are incapable of being able to take care of it. So there would be a need for some things to help out the elderly people, and perhaps provide them with people who would be willing to take care of those things, those odd jobs, for a lesser price. As far as what can we do to make our city beautiful? I love flowers. We can plant things along Fifth, Fifth Street, well, Fifth Street too, I like Fifth Street because I don't know. But on Highway forty-two, beautify the city. Build a wall. When you come off of the interstate, a big, beautiful wall that says, welcome to Carroll County and Carrollton. Put gold letters. It's in one of our colors. Hey, landscape it really well, okay? There are many things you can do. And when you have that first impression, boom, people will think other ways of you.
Thank you. All right. This is the final question that we will do this evening, and then we will go to closing remarks. This is a sixty-second answer, and we'll begin with Mrs. May. What is the one item, if elected, that you would want to accomplish before the end of your two-year term? Explain how you would make it happen.
I think that the one thing that I would like to accomplish, it's not gonna happen in two years. But if I can just have a tiny bit of time to get it started and see a little bit of progress, then that would be the most exciting part of serving on council. But I think we've got to open up a lot of conversations with county leaders, city leaders, because as people have mentioned, you know, that when you come off the interstate, I'm surprised they didn't stop and eat at the fast food restaurants, because it looks horrible. But they're not gonna be able, county government isn't gonna be able to do it without everybody's input, in that state and local.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hill, you have sixty seconds.
It's gonna take city, it's gonna take county, it's gonna take everyone coming together to make the town look the way we want it to look years ago. Carrollton did not get to look in the way it does overnight. And it's not gonna restore itself overnight. But in answering the question, I wanna see Carroll County being the beautiful town it used to be when I was a kid. Ben Franklin's, Lerman's, it's gone back a ways. But I did enjoy it. It was a very safe town. I'm not saying it's not a safe town, but it was a fun town. And I would like to get back to that state. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Root, you have sixty seconds.
When we talk about the city and county and state working together, it goes back to, as I said earlier, with the relationships. We have to have relationships. I'm sure the people in the county don't like the way it looks when you get off the interstate. I know the people in the city don't like the way it looks when we get off the interstate. We have to build relationships with them to make it a priority. I would like to see that done. I would like to see us have a community center, not only for our kids, but for us. I know Ms. Franklin did a movie night here last week, I think it was last week, week before, and had to go to the army. What if her army was booked that weekend because our National Guard was on their maneuvers that weekend? We had nowhere. That's, council's another activity. We need to start a community center somewhere. I would like to see some kind of transportation from the park downtown to this new restaurant. Downtown to some of our historical buildings, our churches, where they can come downtown, and maybe that will grow this. I think we need like a snowball. Once we start this, it needs to snowball and grow to make our community what it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dethridge, you have sixty seconds.
One of the major factions that I have is the budget. And with the pension situation right now, as it is with the percentage of increases that come from the city for employees, there's always been, since I've been around county, the fact that, oh, we're not going to raise taxes. But with the increase that we're gonna see with some of these pension plans, and of course, that's out of our hands unless we go to Franklin. There's where we get out of the box, go talk to our people. And let them know how we feel when it comes to that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Jimenez, you have sixty seconds. Mrs. Jimenez, you have 60 seconds.
I was watching a movie, Under a Tuscan Sun, it's one of my favorite movies, and the gentleman was talking to her about, she was complaining, why she had this house, this house, she was never going to have children in it and things like that. I don't think you've seen that. But he said, a long time ago, in the Alps of Italy, they built a railroad track. There were no trains in that area, but they knew that a train was going to come. Thirty years later, the first train ran through the Italian Alps because they had the track there. I believe we should build for what we expect, okay? My main goal right now is to push through public transportation. Unfortunately, there are grants out there that we can get for public transportation. I have been researching it, and there are ways that we can do this, okay? That's what I would like to accomplish in two years, because it may not be two years. And thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dicko, you have 60 seconds.
There's not one in particular, you know, standalone thing that I want to accomplish. There's a few, and I've got wrote down, but one thing, you know, continued progress. You know, before, before I was ever elected to the council, there was a plan put in place for the Point Park renovations, for the RV park, you know, to completely redo downtown Carrollton, and we've gotta continue that. We've gotta stay on our tracks, stay on our goal. You know, we've got a phenomenal group of public entities in this city. You know, I would put our public works up against any public works of any city of our size in the state of Kentucky. You know, they do a phenomenal job. They do a great job. You know, the fire, the police, top-notch, you know, have absolutely nothing negative to say, and we've gotta continue to fund those agencies. One thing, the same thing that Mayor Adams touched on, we've got to set forth a long-term interlocal agreement to keep our dispatch here. It's so crucial, it's near and dear to me, and that is one thing I'm gonna work towards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate everyone working with us on the questions this evening. We will move now to the closing remarks. Mr. Hill, you get to begin, and you'll have 90 seconds.
First off, I'd just like to thank everyone from my last four years on city council. I've enjoyed it more than I ever thought I would enjoy it. I've said that before, but I truly have. My doors always open. If anybody has any questions, do not, do not hesitate to stop by the house. Do not hesitate to stop me in Carrollville. Do not hesitate to stop me anywhere. I truly enjoy it. I think we're heading in the right direction. The Splash Park is, I think, is gonna be a wonderful thing for the little ones, but it's baby steps. It really is baby steps. It seems like everything's baby steps at this point. But I hope to serve another two years, and I wanna thank you all very much for the last four. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much. Mr. Root, you have 90 seconds for your closing remarks. Apparently, the microphone's wrapped up for the time.
I think the bracket is loose or something. I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. I wanna tell you all, it's important to me, and it's important to people up here, and we wouldn't be here tonight. You know, I think it's time, Carrollton has grown a lot, but we have a lot more growing to do. I think it's time for a change. I think we need some fresh blood on the council. I think that we need your thoughts. I want to be your voice for our city. Like I said, I've been here since 1981. I've never thought about leaving Carrollton. When I met Kim 15 years ago, she came here, she loved this town, but we have to make some changes to stay current and stay up-to-date with other cities our size. I'm available 24/7. I live on Fifth Street. Facebook me, I'll give you my cellphone number. You know, if I'm elected city council, I will guarantee I'll get back with you within a 24-hour period. We need some change here, and I would like to be one of the people of the six that will lead this change for Carrollton. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Mrs. Dethridge, you have 90 seconds for your closing remarks.
Thank you, News Democrat and FFA for sponsoring this tonight. I've learned a lot as well. What I am offering you is leadership, experience, and so far, I still have a little knowledge up here. I would be honored to serve, once again, as your council member, and would appreciate your vote and support on November the 6th. Once again, my, my thought on all of this, and it's been brought up before, we need to get out and meet people and see what they're doing and how they did it. The biggest one I had, of course, was the regional sewer. When the letter came from EPA stating, we're closing your sewer plant, well, I didn't know whether to resign right then or just watch, but anyway, we got it done. It took a lot, about eight years, but we got it done. And it's meeting outside people with money involved.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Jimenez, you have 90 seconds for your closing.
First of all, I appreciate city council and the mayor for what they have been doing. Otherwise, I mean, Carrollton would go down. So, they have been maintaining and trying to move forward. I do appreciate that, and I want to thank you all tonight for listening to some of my ideas. I live here too, so I'm in it too. So, I love Carroll County just as much as any of you all do, although I may not be a lifelong resident, I am a resident. And I think the best way to get things done is to just do it. And I think I provide that new vision that I think we're needing, that little oomph, and I believe I have that, and I hope you will support me. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Dicko, you have 90 seconds and a chance to play with the microphone again. It's becoming a challenge.
Well, again, you know, thank you to everyone, the last four years has been very exciting. I'm really looking forward and hoping for another two years. We've made a lot of progress. It's been so much fun, you know, working with all these people. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, I look forward to Monday nights, you know, our council meetings, they're always full of some sort of new ideal, you know, I learn stuff every Monday night myself, you know. So, thanks again, I look forward to your support in the upcoming election in November, and, you know, I just wanna keep everybody thinking positive, you know, Carrollton is such a nice place, there's so much upside, you know, there's always corrections and changes that can be made, and we're gonna work forward to that, you know, and we're gonna work hard at that. If elected, I promise to keep the ship righted and keep working towards that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. May, you have 90 seconds for your closing remarks.
One thing that I ask of you is to get involved. Look around and see just little things that you can do that might help someone else, but most of all, it'll help you. Whether it be just checking on someone and showing they're, you're interested in them and getting, you know, gaining their friendship so that they may look to you for guidance. I'm a hard worker. I think I proved that over the last year, about kill me, but I want you to get out in your community and see what you can do, what one thing you can do that would help someone else get to where you would like for them to be. And I think it would mean a great deal to yourself as well. I would appreciate your support, and I know we're trying to bring about change, and I was involved in change for a long time in the school system. We made many changes, and those teachers are still making changes. So, I would appreciate any support that you could give me or give those that would make this community a better place to live.
Thank you. We must thank all these candidates, all six of them, for coming out tonight, taking the time and facing the questions that we had. Doug Hill, Jeff Root, Anne Dethridge, Kara Luttrell Jimenez, boy, I stumbled over it again, I did so well, Jeff Dicko, and Sandy May. Thank you all so much. Let's give them a big round of applause. Remember, the election is coming up November 6th. We will be back here next Wednesday night with the candidates running for county offices, judge executive, magistrate, sheriff, and jailer. We hope you will join us again then. I also want to thank the support group that has helped make this possible, Carroll County FFA, Alexis, thank you for timing this evening, and our editor at the News Democrat, Kristen Deck, thank you. And thanks to all of you for coming out and all those folks watching us on Facebook Live. This will be up on our